...special meeting to order. And I will turn it over to Ms. Cutter.
Okay, thank you Chairman, Commissioners. As you will recall on your October 31st budget work session, you identified to county staff as to those areas you wanted additional information as related to the budget. The first one who's going to have that opportunity to make a presentation to you is Michelle Lancaster, who's the, not only she is the Assistant County Manager, but also is the Executive Director over Human Services. What our objective is today is to provide you with information and then ask you what additional information you would like for us to bring back to you. So this is a process, as we discussed on October 31st, in which we're probably going to do somewhat of a high-level overview of the budget. And then if there are any specific areas you want to take a deeper dive, we are going to be seeking that direction from the Board, and we will bring it back to you in a subsequent session. So if there are no questions for me, I will turn it over to Michelle. Thank you. And I'm actually going to start by introducing, see if this is working now, the staff that we have here with us. So some people, some of you actually have asked me how I do the things that I do. These people right here are really how it all gets done. I'm going to ask them actually to introduce themselves. So Dana, I'll start with you in the area that you're in.
Sure, I'm Dave Flaherty. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I will be over training, program integrity, and healthcare accreditation, accreditation for the Health Department.
Good evening. My name is Earl Ford Jr. I'm over the Economic Services Programs. That includes all food stamps, daycare, and all Medicaid. And TANF, not TANF, I'm going to reorganization. Been doing this stuff for about 23 years in the past.
My name's Katie Coffey, and I'm now over our Quality Assurance, Quality Improvement, Information Systems, Information Security. I think that's about it, just systems and processes.
Hi, my name is Monica Smith. I'm the Division Manager for Children and Adult Services.
Hi, I'm Janet Payne, Assistant Services Director. So I'm responsible for the day-to-day operations and to try to help support these folks in getting done the things that they need to get done on a daily basis.
Good evening. I'm Audria Caesar. I'm the Director of Community Support and Outreach.
I'm Jackie Morgan. I'm over Business Operations, which includes Dave and Katie's world, as well as this cooperation that the team has been wanting to cause up in customer service and support.
I'm Dennis Shorner. Second week on the job, I'm the New Deal Director.
Tracy Colley, I'm the Environmental Manager, and I manage all three of the main environmental health programs.
Hi, I'm Michelle Markano, Division Director for Veteran Services.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming this afternoon. So as Cindy mentioned, one of the goals that we hope to have us accomplish is to give you a little deeper dive into what we do from a service area standpoint. But also, and at the end you'll see this, is to really to get you to tell us the things that you want to know more about. I'm going to give you some deeper dive in a couple of areas, like environmental health and some of the reorg that we've gone through. But really to get an opportunity for the Board to let us know what are things you need to know about in more in-depth in order to make decisions around budget. So that's really what our focus is around. Our vision and mission, you can see those, I'm not going to read them to you, but really focused on quality of life for the residents of Union County. And then as you just heard from these folks, these are all the areas that we manage as part of our service area and the operations that we have. When we get into our staffing structure, I did this a little differently than you might see, or diced it a little differently than you would see in your budget. You can see what the FTE counts are for the key areas, and then you can see the budget amounts. You can tell that obviously I did not put budget dollars for community services and outreach or our business operations division. Those are actually captured in the larger budgets of public health and DSS and how we budget currently for those areas. And then for public health and social services, which are our largest areas in human services, I included the county funds, so you had some idea of the magnitude of the decisions that you make about county dollars. When you look at their entire budgets, for public health, the total budget is $10.8 million, and for social services, the total budget is $29.9 million. So we do leverage our county dollars for a fair number of other dollars. And really, one of the things that we want to focus with our staffing additions and restructuring, I'll talk a little bit about business operations, is how we can be more aggressive about how we leverage other dollars before we spend the county dollars, making sure we're getting the best bang for the buck. This is probably a little hard to read, but it's, we have a large organization. And one of the things that I wanted to spend a little more focused time on is looking at the most significant reorganization that we've recently undergone. And so you can, if you start from your left and go across, that's how I will talk about these areas. When you look at business operations, which is the area that Jackie Morgan is now responsible for, and Jackie has been with us for about 12 years, she was in the Health Department's side of the business as the Operations Manager. So she's well-familiar with what happens in public health and with human services. And really, the focus that we've tried to take with this reorg is getting a more global focus on systems, processes, reporting, as well as our training and professional development and our compliance. Previously, this work had been more focused in a siloed approach, so there were things that we were doing in those areas, but they were either DSS-specific or public health-specific. And now we're looking across the entire agency. This area, I think, grew from about 44 staff to 76 staff in total. So this is a much, a pretty significant reorganization in the area that Jackie is going to be responsible for. Additionally, one of the key positions that the Board approved in the budget this current year was a Senior Financial Analyst, and as I talked about leveraging our dollars differently, that person is over our Finance area, Danita Farr. She came to us, Jackie, how many months ago? Three months ago. So she's new to the organization, but really taking a deep dive in how we look at our finance structure and being more aggressive in how we manage that part of our business. And so that's not just budget and finance, but it's also billing, accounts payable, accounts receivable. It's a pretty complex part of the business that we have at Human Services. You go across, the next one in the middle is Audria's group, Community Support and Outreach. This is an opportunity that we realized when our Nutrition and Transportation Director retired recently, Annette Sullivan, that this gave us an opportunity to think differently about how we manage our services and really put some emphasis on our outreach and our outward-facing programs. Our Work First, Emergency Assistance, and our WIC program, and then focus on some health promotion and education opportunities. Our Senior Nutrition Program is moving into this area, and Janet is actually continuing to serve in the interim role of Director of Fleet and Transportation as we identify the best place to locate those businesses as part of Human Services. There's some different opportunities there and really thinking about how we manage that business going forward. Social Services is an area where there is a fairly significant amount of change. As you know, we have a vacancy in that Division Director. We are at the final stages of recruiting for that position. I expect to make an offer actually before Christmas, and so we'll be announcing that soon. We had a really robust candidate pool, and I'm looking forward to what that director is going to bring to the organization. And as you can see, what we've done with this area is we actually went from seven direct reports to two direct reports for that Division Director, with our focus being on what I believe are the core services of Social Services, adult and children's services, so social work, true social work, and economic services, so Monica and Earl's areas. Additionally, one of the things that we've done is to combine our intake unit for adult and children's services. Previously, those had been managed separately. I think several years ago, it had been a combined unit, it moved away from that, and now we're moving back to what we think is a better model to leverage the skills of our staff, cross-train, and really get more bang for the buck out of that group of folks. And I think they're actually really excited about that. Any questions about what I've gone through so far? So historically, most of you, I think, know that prior to 2013, there was a separate Board of Health and a separate Social Services Board. State law changed, and it allowed counties an opportunity to have a consolidated Human Services Agency model, which is what Union County did in 2013. And so this is still a fairly young organization, really, that only has come into its own in terms of how we are organized, and obviously, we're continuing to tweak that to be more robust in certain areas. Some of the key changes that the Board adopted in the FY18 budget were two additional child welfare workers, investigations workers, a Child and Family Team Coordinator for Child Welfare, additional Environmental Health Specialists, a Processing Assistant for Environmental Health, and our Senior Financial Analyst that I just mentioned. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of these positions in just a second. As we look at our major initiatives, I've just gone through really probably the most significant one, which is this restructuring that we're undergoing. And really, with the goals of reallocating our positions in a way that I think are better utilized to get services in a way that we would like to see them for the community, with a real focus in social services, on those core services of economic services and social work, and to really hone on the work that we're doing there with our staff. And to, in business operations, be more robust around systems, processes, training, and compliance, in a way that is more global than just program by program, but really thinking organizationally about how we do our business and do it well. Next big thing, which I think most people are aware, if you drive down 601, we have a new building that's come out of the ground quite nicely, but we've ran into just one little hiccup that we'll talk about right now. Cindy sent an email out on Friday, which talked to you about our parking issue that we have, and it simply put, "We don't have enough parking for our staff." That is something that we discovered just a few weeks ago in county, Janet actually counted the parking spaces one day and said, "I don't think we have enough parking spaces." So we started looking at that a little bit closer, and we have realized that what happened to occur was in some value engineering at a time when they were looking to lower the budget. I think you all recall that the budget for this project was anticipated to be higher than it actually came in at. And so at that time, staff made some decisions to value engineer some of the parking, both for customers and employees, at the same time realizing that there would need to be an expansion. So the expansion has been accounted for in the planning, and that are the highlighted, the brown and the green are what is currently built. The outlined green and brown are the anticipated enhancements that would have to take place. So we are at a point now where we are working with the engineers, architects, Ed's staff to identify what our proper solution is, and it's really coming down to, should we expand both of those now? We have the money and the budget, the project budget, as you'll recall, this budget did, this project came in under budget, or does it make more economic and practical sense just to expand our employee parking? And as soon as that decision is made, it will come to the Board. It has a price tag that you will have to approve, that change order. We believe the price will be in that magnitude. So that is our process. We do plan to continue to move. We're going to move the first weekend of March, at least half the staff, and the next weekend of March will be the rest, and do some temporary solutions to accommodate the parking that we will have on that date. So are there any questions about parking?
When do you anticipate having the new or the additional parking completed?
May or June is what the timeframe looks like right now.
Because we're going to have to go through permitting with the City of Monroe. We do believe the stormwater ponds have probably been adequately sized for the original parking diagram, so hopefully, it'll be a fairly easy permitting process.
When, we went through the process and the value engineering, why wasn't it caught then? I mean, the number of staff hasn't changed that significantly.
I wish I wasn't here then. I believe if people had made that decision or not here now.
That is correct.
So we're not sure.
We had two different estimators. We had the actual engineer who did an estimate on the building, and we hired also an additional estimator. We went out a number of times to get estimates as we were going through the design process. And each time, they came back and said, "You're going to come in and you may have to help me $48 million."
We're looking at $40 million on a $30 million construction budget.
And so at that point in time, the Facilities Manager, along with senior staff at Human Services, went through and made some value engineering decisions. Their decisions were not brought to me, those decisions were not brought to Ed. They were made, and it wasn't until we realized recently that yes, parking was an issue. I'm not going to tell you that's the answer.
How many additional parking spaces will need to be constructed?
About 120, between 120 and 130 staff spaces.
Estimated cost?
Half a million dollars.
Okay. Does your diagram reflect the total footprint of the property?
Is that the total? I believe it is. Yes, that's the total footprint. So this is 601, the brown, that's where the staff will be, right off 601. So we had one call with the engineers, architects, we're having another one this week, and we will keep you updated through the manager with our progress on this temporary problem.
Was there any look at consolidating, not consolidating, but holding those parkings closer to the building to free up potential use in the future for the vacant land?
And you might have to answer that.
When the parking was laid out, it was laid out with the concept of where additional footprint of the building would go, and you could see there's a large vacant part of that property yet, for future expansion, for either human services or other associated uses, and room to expand those parking lots into the ground lot, the employee lot, even if you could move, continue to expand south towards the property line there.
Anything else on this one? You have an additional package of information that I sent to you, and you also have in front of you, and that really goes through the next couple of items in terms of strategic issues, and then we'll get to the close and your comments. You can see, if you just follow through, some of these things are just items that I gave you to have some idea of the numbers of folks that we interact with in some of our program areas, so looking at veteran services, transportation trips, our senior nutrition numbers, and the clients that we work with, and the waiting list that we have in that area. Then I gave you a more detailed background on environmental health, and I'd love to talk about that just a little bit. This continues to be an area that many of you ask me about in terms of wait times and staffing. I think some of you receive phone calls occasionally with questions. The information that I provided to you gives you some more explicit information about intern training and authorization, and how long it takes for staff to be authorized if they do not come to us already authorized. And fortunately, or unfortunately, the staff that we have been able to recruit come to us unauthorized. And so it takes us some additional time to get those folks up to the level that they need to be qualified under state standards. And so this just lays out for you some more detail about that, and Tracy is here and can clearly talk about this in a more intelligent way than I can. I do believe that one of the most important things that I'm sharing with you are our wait times for service. Tracy put this together for me at the end of October, a snapshot of at that time, and I think we're pretty consistent, actually maybe a little better because it's winter time in some of these areas, where you can see based on territory and based on activity type for on-site and well permits, what type of wait time people should be looking at. And so when people call me and complain, the first thing I do is say, "Okay, will we go look and see what this looks like, and what you're telling me is, seems to be in the realm of possible, or if it seems a little off?" Sometimes it's a little off, and I call Tracy and say, "Okay, help me understand what's going on here." And we get the right information communicated. But you can see that 10 weeks is our largest wait, and that's in our site evaluations, and it varies from eight to 10 weeks according to the territory that's covered. Those numbers have come down in the last year, and Tracy and her staff are continuing to whittle away at that. Having additional staff would help. We are working diligently to hire staff. And it is a difficult recruiting area. We have added two additional human resource staff in partnership with our centralized HR, and they are working closely with Tracy as well to think creatively about how we recruit, be more aggressive in our recruiting, not only be passive recruiters, but be very proactive in going after folks who are qualified to do this work. And so that is what we're going to continue to do, so that we can continue to see these times go down. But if you go to the next page, page five, you'll also see our comparison activities, our data, so the numbers, starting back in FY10, and you can see, you can actually just kind of run down the percentage change on the right and see the significant growth in the workload that Tracy and her staff have experienced. And so it's a combination of things, having staff, our workload has increased, and really thinking differently about processes and procedures. And Tracy, I think, has done a tremendous job since she has been on board as a manager and looking at policy improvements and process improvements, and you can see those as well on the last sheet. And so this is an area where you may want us to do a deeper presentation, and we're happy to do that for you. We have hired one new person in the last couple of months, but we also lost two, we hired two, but we lost a staff member that we had on board to another county. So it's one of those areas where, you know, you move two steps forward and one step back, and some of those things are outside of our control, but we are continuing to recruit very heavily in this area. Do you have any questions about environmental health before I go on about a couple of other No environmental help? Okay.
Mandatory maintenance inspections, you've got it highlighted here, where we did zero and then 25, now it looks like close to 1,000.
Okay, right.
We're just not doing those at all?
So this is the one you'll recall that we brought you, that the decision was made when numbers got so significant, and the other areas that this, these inspections are not taking place. That's one of the, we brought to you the request for staff, this is one of the things that we want to begin to do, but we have to have the staffing at the level that we are budgeted in order to make that happen. We just don't have the manpower to do all the other things we have to do and that.
This was part of the discussion we had in July when we were talking about, when the service was provided in the past, it was done at no charge, and this was a discussion we had where that we do believe it is a positive for the property owner, it's not done on an annual basis, based upon the type of system they have. And we did have discussion with the Board as to some recommendations we had as to fees. At that point in time, the Board decided not to go forward with those additional fees. We will be coming back to the Board, probably after the first of the year, to have additional discussions as it relates to those fees, to be able to fund this program. But based upon the backlog we have presently with respect to new construction, that is really where we have put our priorities.
Is this the state statute, this has to be done periodically?
Correct, yes.
If we get to that goal of the five people that are authorized, will that bring us to a level to be able to accomplish?
We feel like we would be able to start chipping away at that number. And I didn't bring that with me, but I can, I'll share that with you. We had shared it previously, but Tracy had done some calculations that based on that staffing model, how many we would be able to do on an annual basis. We are looking at bringing a retiree on in January, someone who's retiring from Mecklenburg, who's interested in coming, so he'll be able to work part-time and do these without going through any training, can hit the ground running, and start to chip away at some of these for us. So we do think that would help us. Now, it doesn't get them all done, and I'll send you the number so that you can see exactly what it would give us.
And that's been part of our strategy, is we're not filling our permanent positions with part-time temporaries, but we are putting on, anytime we have a retiree, and after 30 days, they're able to come back and work for approximately 20 hours per week, or I think it's 900 hours a year. And so if they're willing to come back and work on a part-time basis, we hire them as temporary part-timers to try and also assist us with this backlog, because they already have all of those certifications.
So is the backlog a result of the staff not being trained and not being fully staffed, or because of the fees? I guess I'm trying to understand, because we talked about the fees in July, and I was expecting the fees, the response to come back a little bit before the first of the year. So we've been six months, is it the training or is it the fees?
I don't think it's that. I think it's the training and it's the lack of staff.
Okay.
So having the fees would offset the county requirement for the staff, but really, it's having the staff, however they're paid for, that's the key. And so without having the staff and your numbers growing, I mean, it's just simple math, we can't keep up at that point. But it's not about, the fee was to offset the county financial obligation to this, nothing to do with how quickly we could get things done necessarily.
Okay, but all of the authorized staff are on board now?
The authorized, how many, we have two staffers continuing to go through, with their training, Tracy?
Well, presently, we have four interns. One just got authorized, so we have four interns that are in training but cannot function independently at this point. One should be able to by the end of January, but the others are still in training.
What's the timeframe on those other three then?
We anticipate about nine months to get them fully authorized in both onsite water protect, onsite septic systems and wells.
How long have those five been on board?
One has been here two weeks, and one has been here one week. The other one has, the one that will be authorized next month has been here about seven and a half months, and the other, probably six months.
What was the delay in getting them on board?
I mean, it's just, it's availability. I mean, it's, we don't have a huge, like I said earlier about my DSS Director, I had a robust candidate pool. I cannot say the same thing about these positions. It's just availability of the type of staff that we want to hire. I mean, it is, I believe that's simple.
We're looking for highly qualified staff that we can train to stay long-term, that won't just stay for a year or two and then move on to another county.
So we're taking, with our HR staff, one of the approaches that we're taking is that they want us to do some more proactive, more aggressive recruiting, so that they're actually reaching out to people. We do some things through LinkedIn to look for folks, and more of an aggressive instead of passive recruitment, which it means just waiting on somebody to apply. One of the things that Jackie has done proactively is reached out to the state to identify how many certified staff there are around the state, so that we can try to identify places where we can go to find people who can do this work. Dennis, just came here from Stanley, I think you would say this is not an uncommon scenario for this group of people that we're looking for. For us, though, again, I think it's the lack of staff, but also the volume of work that we have because of all the well and septic systems that we have throughout Union County, we are in an unusual position, perhaps in some counties are, that we need a significant number of staff because of that significant number or amount of work that's out there.
What can we knock contract that works?
We looked at that option. I know that Anson County contracts with Stanley County, the gentleman that's working there, but those resources are limited. Because of the minimal staffing in adjacent counties, they just don't have the time to hop over two counties and go to work all weekend long to do, to work on our backlog. The other issue with Union County is we have very complex soils, we have difficult situations, and oftentimes, if you have a situation like that, the lot ends up taking longer to evaluate because it has to be reviewed by a present staff member that has some familiarity with the soils and the specific conditions in the county.
When does it become a problem?
I think Tracy would say it is a problem. I mean, we realize this is a problem.
This is not a service level we believe is acceptable.
Well, I mean, who's going to come knocking on the door and say, "You did zero inspections in 2015, 2016"?
That I don't think we're concerned about necessarily, which is, I think, why they chose that area as probably the least problematic. That's my understanding of what they've shared with me. I think where, you know, the thing that we're trying to keep up with are these site evaluations. That's the thing that people are calling you about and me about. That's the thing that people are calling you about and me about are the site evaluations because that means moving into a home or doing some renovation or remodel, something like that, that's, you know, very personal to people. It's the thing that they want to happen fast. It usually means money, time and money. And so that's really where we've been focused. I think that, Tracy, is that correct, where we really are trying to come up with creative ways and methods to take that down and we have seen some decrease of about four weeks, I think, since I've been involved in human services. But it's still not where we, where we want it to be and I don't think it's where you all want it to be as well.
Yes, I just, you know, is there's no state regulatory agency going to come and say anything to us about this? I mean, it says mandated, it says what mandatory.
It's a mandated services, but I don't know that there are any repercussions with respect to.
There's not a fine or a fee or?
Not that I'm aware of, no. And it's not, and the state doesn't pay us to do that, you know? You know, the state mandates a lot of these services, environmental health. One is our restaurant inspections, but pay us very little to do that work, but we're required to do so.
And we've been in communication with the state. They're aware of our staffing issues. They're aware of the process improvements that we're working on. So I think they have an understanding of where we are and that we have a plan moving forward to address that once we have adequate staffing.
And to give you, so a comparison, so in Mecklenburg, they don't do a lot of onsite work because they don't have a lot of septic and well sites in that county, but they have a lot of restaurants and businesses. So when you start looking at their workload, where you see where they're not meeting 100% is own restaurants and that work, where we do meet 100% and have for quite some time. So I think it's, you know, it is somewhat contingent upon the community that you're in and that's where we see such a difference in what is required of us and again, this volume. We are open to any and all ideas. I know that Tracy, as we talk about this quite a bit, one of the things with Dennis coming on, we have kept Bobby Cobb on as well and doing some special project work and he's going to be doing some focused work with Tracy and looking at what other things there are that we can do to be creative. His public health background is primarily in environmental health, so he's done that for over 30 years and hopefully we come up with some good solutions. But staff is really the key and we will do everything we can to continue to be creative on that, on that front. But I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I have 20 applicants that are ready to go because that's, that's not the case. And if I asked you for 20 positions right now and you gave them to me, I'd have 20 vacant positions next year. So I don't think that's the right thing to do either.
You had a program where they could use, individual could use a soil scientist?
Correct.
To do some of that? Is that a resource that we could use on a temporary basis as consultants to come in and do this kind of work to help us catch up?
Tracy?
We do that now. In fact, if an applicant is willing to hire soil scientists to do the evaluation, submit that paperwork to us, flag system onsite will cut their wait time in half. Now, that's one option. There's also another option where they hire licensed soil scientist, an engineer, and contract with an installer to do what's called an engineered option permit. It's an application, standard application to the state. They evaluate, design and submit everything to us. We're there to review the application, store the documents and we're there on the backside for the final installation inspection and we're out. We have the ability to charge 30% of the customary fees that are involved in that. You probably saw that on the fee approval sheet from last year. But that option is available to them and in fact, I've approved two of those in the last several months.
That's not what I'm saying.
Beg your pardon?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying since we've got a backlog of people that are not doing that, can we use resources as consultants to come in and help us catch up the backlog? Because evidently they are, they have the training and certification to do it.
No, they're not registered as environmental health specialists. They're licensed soil scientists. They can look at the soil, but they cannot permit sites.
We do encourage folks to use these other alternatives. I mean, the second one that Tracy just spoke of was allowed in the legislature two sessions ago, I believe. And as she said, she's approved two in the last couple of months. So I do think we've had some people getting their own backhoe and some of the things that does cut their wait time in half, but we encourage them to do that. But that is, it's different than how we've done things in the past. But we, we're happy to talk to folks, if you hear from folks and they want to know the alternatives. I mean, Tracy, I think spends a lot of time already doing that, but we want to get these done just like the property owner does. So whatever works for them and giving them the education that we need to, we're happy to do that with our staff.
What are these percentages based on? What, how are they calculated? I'm having a hard time following some of them.
Tracy, I think, Tracy read these numbers for me, but I think they go from the first column and the increase over time. Is that?
Right, right.
From FY10 to FY17?
So if you just compare improved number of improvement permits from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 17 as a number, there was an increase of 81% year over year, number of improvement permits issued. So the outer number, 217, is comparing fiscal year 2010 to fiscal year 2017. That's where we get the 217. Same number of staff, in fact, less staff, but with the policies that developed, the process improvements, the data collection, all the other small and seemingly minor changes we've made, we've been able to do more work with less staff under a great deal of pressure.
I'm still just having a, I understand the growth and the decline in a couple of areas, but I'm still having a hard time with the calculations. If you look at the site visits, you're down from 2010, but yet you show a change of 14%. So can you verify the numbers?
Well, 2010 is not the number. It's 2008, 2009 because there's no data under improvement permits under '08, '09, but there was.
I didn't include '08, '09, Tracy. I think that's probably why.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Because we had '08, '09, we didn't have very good data. We have a lot of holes in '08, '09. So we'll go back and run these for you again to make sure that if we didn't lose something in the formula.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the numbers are right because you're showing an increase of 14% on your site visits from 20, the fiscal year 2010.
I'm confident in the numbers, the actual count, and it may be that the formula got lost when we, when we moved it over and we'll check that percentage point. Any more environmental health questions, yes?
I heard the comment earlier that we're trying to hire stable staff to keep them from coming here for a year and then going to another county. What is leading them to lead to go to another county? What?
Some cases it's higher pay, I think, that we've heard. So you know, we're going through the classification and compensation study. So as soon as we, I don't know what those numbers are looking like at this point. I haven't seen those. So it may be that what we get back from there will show us that we've been low in this area and that will give us an opportunity to correct that. But I think the last staff person that left, that is what they, what they told us.
They did. They went to Durham County. Were able to receive a good increase and, you know, less work.
And unfortunately, we do, this is an area where we do have a lot of employees that are either eligible for retirement or soon will be eligible for retirement and that's another challenge that we have.
So other than pay, what are we doing to retain them? Are we requiring some type of agreement if we provide the nine months' worth of training and they become certified? Are we requiring a year or two-year commitment to the county?
Requiring?
We have not done that. I don't think that's been a practice. We can look into that.
So at this point?
I don't know if that hurts us on the front end or keeps them.
Well, certainly, you know, to your point, I think that's something to look at, but I think at the same time, to your point, it's going to be very difficult to get somebody to sign a two-year agreement if we're so far below, you know, the standard that, you know, I think that's something to consider, but I think we'd have to do that after the comp and class was completed because I think it'd be.
Yeah, we're hopeful that that shows us something. Like I just haven't seen that yet.
My concern, we're training people for nine months. We're investing nine months' worth of time and money and there's nothing to keep them here other than their handshake saying that we'd like to stay with Union County. But if that comp and classification study comes back and it says that they're within the range, then we're still left in the same situation that we currently are. Or if we're not so out of line that it doesn't justify a big move. And that's where my concern would be. We are investing a lot of money in the individuals. There has to be some way to build some type of an agreement in place to say, you know, in exchange for all of this training, which costs a significant amount of money, you need to agree to stay with Union County and as a result, we'll do this for you as well.
Well, I think one of the things that we could look at, and it just kind of popped into my head, is how do we kind of incentivize? Because we are a unique county with respect to our soils, with the fact that so much of our county is rural, that they certainly could go to another county, that the pay may be comparable, but they do have to work not as hard as they do have to work in Union County and because of the type of situations that we have. So there may be some sort of incentive that we need to offer to those individuals because of the conditions that we have that are fairly unique to our area.
What kind of degrees required for this?
It's a certain degree.
Bachelor's degree, 30 semester hours of physical sciences. So most of my folks have a biology, chemistry, physics. I have my undergrad's geology, so science.
Is there any way of reaching out to the schools, like doing something with early college or something like that to?
We are actually already in touch with Western, ECU, NC State and Wounded.
How about our high school early college?
High school early college? We can certainly do that.
That would be, you know, your thoughts of retaining local people to do local jobs, that might be, if we can get them started there at least or do something there.
Unfortunately, it's a lot like wastewater treatment plant operators. It's not considered one of the most glamorous jobs.
Neither's taught one, is it? But I hear that you have to have a degree to do it.
Bachelor's degree, yes. And 30 semester hours of physical science.
I assume we have more an equivalent if they have years of experience that can substitute for education? No?
They'll cut down on some of the, on the job work time if you have a master's or a specific environmental health degree.
So that's a state requirement?
Yes.
For water and wastewater?
For any.
I don't understand that a lot of.
For all environmental specialists, food, lodging, children's environmental, they're onsite.
Okay. But just to emphasize something Michelle mentioned earlier, if you all do get complaints, please refer them to Michelle or I and we will definitely look into them. Because there have been a few instances where it may have been, information wasn't relayed from the applicant to the department, but we are trying our very best to try and get this resolved and to be as customer service oriented as possible.
So the last couple of areas that I just want to spend a brief moment on, economic services. This is an area, I think back in October, you'll remember that I did a presentation during a regular board meeting about DSS on the whole, was fairly significant, 50 or so slides about some of the reviews that we go through and the audits and what those mean and what those have looked like. And what I would like to tell you today is that economic services, our staff is working incredibly hard and it's paying off for us. Earl and his staff have done a great job. I've included some volume numbers for our food and nutrition services. But to give you an idea of our state requirements that we had talked about previously for food and nutrition services, for the last month that we have currently, which is the month of September, we were at 97.26% timeliness. This is one where we need to be over 95%. We have been over 95% now for several months and have not gone below that in our food and nutrition services. When I updated you in October, one of the areas that we were struggling with were our Medicaid numbers. And I think we were like at 65% at that time. We have approved at 94 and 95% in the areas that are measured and the staff has done a really good job in looking at their processes and making improvements. And so I do not expect to see that decline. We're on a positive trajectory for our economic services work. Additionally, one of the areas that we talked about was our child welfare. We had significant vacancy numbers and knock on wood, this is one I sometimes hate to say out loud because I'm afraid somebody's going to resign tomorrow. I've not gotten a resignation in child welfare in a long time, for relatively speaking, a long time. So last week when I asked for the numbers, we had 10 vacancies out of 64, but five of those had already had offers extended. And I think after talking to Monica today, we have three more.
We have three that we've extended, we waited to extend offers to and we have two vacancies in investigations.
So we have made a tremendous amount of work in that area. And a lot of that, I really do think is because of the restructuring that Monica brings, a really well thought out process and procedures that she likes to follow. She has a great reputation. She's been with the organization a long time. When I announced the restructuring with our DSS staff and that Monica was going to be taking this role, it was met with applause and not encouraged applause. I mean, it was overwhelming. The staff has been very positive. And as I mentioned earlier, the intake of changes, combining adult and child intake are positive. The feedback that I'm receiving about all of these changes is very positive. Our last state review, which we had in October with child welfare, we saw an improvement in our supervision rates with areas continuing to need work that they identified at that point were around our staffing and vacancies. And so we've made tremendous gains and I would anticipate that when they're here, I believe in April, we will see significant gains in the work that we're doing in child welfare. So with that, I'm going to go to this last slide where I'm going to ask you for your feedback. We talked, obviously you asked a lot about environmental health and we are happy to come back with a more in-depth presentation or if there's specific things that you would like on that topic. But we also would like to get any feedback that you have about the work that we're doing, the mission that we have to create better quality of life for the residents of the county and any direction that you have as we think about budget and what you would like to know more about in order to make good decisions. We want to put those presentations together for you the way that you'd like to see them.
Michelle, I would just say you did a very good job with the presentation. We appreciate that. So obviously you're working hard to make improvement in a number of areas. I think some of the board raised some, sort of the wheels are turning. The thought process is ongoing in terms of, we know there's some issues out there with the lag time, so all of us working together, hopefully we can move that forward.
And if the board would like, we will continue to provide you with regular updates as it relates to hiring, filling those positions, what status they are, et cetera, so that you know as well as what our wait times continue to decrease because they have decreased two to three weeks since probably July.
And I noted, we'll come back with parking as we mentioned. Come back not only with the things that Cindy just mentioned around environmental health, but also the questions that you had and specifically about some of the numbers. And we will reach out to the high school early college programs, see if there's some opportunity to partner there and we'll follow up on all those items. Yes, sir.
Could you also provide, I'm looking at your page three that lists eight, 10 weeks and things. Can you add a column and give us what the goal is? What is perceived as acceptable goal?
I'm not sure I can do that. I think that, I mean, to me that goes to service level expectation. I would ask, I mean, I think we're meeting what we can. We would like to do this as quickly as possible. I'm not sure I can give you a, and I think that would probably only be for that specific area is my guess.
Well, I'm.
Eight, 10 weeks. Tracy, do you have an answer for that?
I think that once the interns become authorized and can function independently, we'll be able to give a better idea of timeframe. Just please understand that these are folks that are new to the field. They still require a good bit of oversight. They continue to be an intern for two years. So nine months they've been trained, they become authorized, they go into the field, they're able to legally function and make decisions on their own, but there's a lot of money and a lot of liability with this job and we want to make sure that they are functioning not only quickly, but with quality. So my expectation is that they're going to be quickly and efficiently, but also with a great deal of accuracy.
Two quick questions. What do the interns do? Do they just drive listed ones that are trained or?
They do. We put them in the field almost. We put them in the field almost immediately. First, they have to familiarize themselves with the rules, state rules, and then we have a well ordinance, and then they start cycling through the fully trained staff. We kind of supplement that with questions and reviews by the supervisor and myself and the fully trained staff. There's a checkoff sheet of certain experiences and goals that they have to meet before they can even apply for authorization. They go to Raleigh for centralized training. There are two modules for that. There's a two-week general module and a one-week onsite water protection module. So that's required.
And what is the degree requirement?
Bachelor's degree, 30 semester hours of science, physical science. Right. And then, once they hit those benchmarks, we make application to the regional environmental health specialist to come down. That person rides a little way to get test. They have to pass the test. If they pass that test, that written test, they go out to properties with the regional environmental health specialist. They work together. They have to hit certain targets and on the site evaluations, on the finals, on the evaluations for the wells, and then they obtain authorization. They don't become fully registered as an environmental health specialist, Commissioner Holmes, until they take a state exam that's also partly national, and have two years of on-the-job experience unless they're in environmental health major.
So who's us to find other counties who we can maybe encourage their employees to come to work for us?
Best case scenario, though, if ever in a perfect world, is there something that is going to require that it take two weeks? That's the absolute minimum of one week? Is there anything?
You're referring to the centralized training in Raleigh?
No, in terms of-
To get our hopes of 10 weeks down to one week.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's definitely directly correlated with staffing. Staffing and the economic aspect of supply and demand.
So there's no testing, no turnaround time that requires, it's going to take at least one week or at least two weeks to get that, to get accomplished?
I guess I don't, maybe I don't fully understand your question.
So Tracy knows pretty much how long it takes to do a site visit and get, so it's like, I look at 70 to 110 minutes, something like that. So we know how much it takes to do a site visit. We know what our volume is. We know that that just mathematically means it's going to take eight to 10 weeks. If, I'm going to ask the question a little bit differently. If you would like for us to have a one-week or two-week turnaround, I think we could show you, based on the volume that we have, how many staff it would take, fully trained staff, to meet that requirement, if you would like to see that. I think we could, we could do that.
My point was, I understand that staff is creating a lot of lag time, the time it takes to get it done. Point being, is if you were fully staffed, people were standing around waiting to do the job, is there something, is there something intrinsic out there? Paperwork, forms, tests, turnaround, any of that kind of thing that it's going to take that you tell the, that you know is going to be at least two weeks? Perfect, in a perfect way.
The other thing to understand about site work and you people individually on their property is, is there a lot of variables? We go out to a site and there's a pit bowl that attaches.
I understand that.
There's property boundaries that aren't marked. There's a house site that's not marked, or maybe it's marked and they change their minds, or the wife changes their minds. So this is a customer service situation where we're also regulatory. So we ride that line where we really provide that service of highest quality, but we also have a regulatory requirement, and there's responsibility on the applicant's side to prepare these lots according to the required state standards so we can do our work.
So from a bare minimum standpoint, everything works out well, staffing is available, what's the minimum turnaround time for somebody we would be looking at?
Have you looked at the numbers if we were fully staffed right now with our numbers that we have, what that would look like?
And they were ready to go when you got there?
I have not. I can-
We can run that.
We can bring that information.
But I can definitely prepare that.
We can.
Do we have a target, I think to what the chairman was commenting, is there a target on what we're looking for? Are we trying to get that turnaround down to two weeks, three weeks?
I guess I'm looking for your input on that. What do you find to be acceptable?
I would look at, for me, I would look at historical averages. If, over the course of the last, let's say, five or six years, we've averaged three weeks, then we should probably be somewhere in that three-week range. If it's six to eight weeks, probably do a little bit better.
I would say, since I've been here, I would say the average, you know, the range was probably three to eight weeks, depending on the ebb and flow of development, moving in the springtime, through the summer, it was much more active. We had a slow time, unfortunately now we don't have a slow time, or fortunately. I think it's important to see environmental health in certain aspects as part of economic development, that we are assisting with that, not trying to hold it back, but we have a job to do.
So from my viewpoint, it would be, we should be somewhere in that three-day range, depending on the time of year, no longer? I mean, we can be better than that, but then we have to evaluate whether we're overstaffed. So in that three-day, week range, based on historical averages?
Sure, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm talking about, having goals. And I'm looking at, you know, there are, septic field inspections have to be done on a house is sold. And there's a 10-day limit on that inspection time before your inspections have to be done to move the real estate process on. So we're looking at, if you look at these numbers, I don't see them going down. So what they'll do is allow to is plan ahead and not get caught with our pants down and not having people that we could plan ahead and hire that seven months in advance for that growth projection. And that's where we need to be.
Well-
It's hard, we're in catch-up mode right now.
Tracy, would that scenario fall under the inspection of existing systems?
Yeah, we actually don't do inspections for real estate closings. We do inspections through building code enforcement for expansion, putting full additions, anything that may impact the location. We don't do inspections for real estate closings.
They probably hire someone independently?
Right, there's too much liability in that. The state frowns upon that. We stopped doing those several years ago.
So if I sell a house, I can't call for inspection?
You don't call environmental health for that. You call a private inspection service. Someone that's a certified septic inspector. There's different certifications for that in the state, and you can call someone like that.
Well, the point, that point I'm trying to make is that if you have those goals and you've got your three to eight weeks, or you've got 10 days, whatever, then you could better plan, looking at the growth that we've got coming, based on building permits and things of that nature.
We'll give you those numbers. I'll give you the staffing numbers that go along with that. I think we're moving in that direction with the staff that have been funded, but I believe it would take a few more to hit that target.
What is our permitting trend right now for building permits?
It's actually pretty flat.
Okay. So why the spike in inspections? If our permitting is relatively flat, is it just the locations, people?
I think so, because when we went back and looked at where we were in 2008, 2009, 2010 during the recession, we took a significant decline in number of building inspections. What we have seen when the economy started to recover is we had a very significant uptick. But since then, it's been fairly flat. But what we do think is happening is, you know, it's about 18 to 24 months from the time someone may come in with a site plan before you actually come in for a building permit. So that activity has definitely picked up. So even though we've seen a fairly flat trend over the last couple of years, my guess is that you are going to see increases over the next several years, because we are seeing more rezonings coming in, we are seeing more site plans come in. When I meet with planning on a monthly basis, to see what kind of activity that they are seeing, it has increased over the last year.
And onsite permitting, so it recently was a change in law, but those are alive for-
Up to 2020.
So they get a permit now, we may not have to go out and do anything for whatever reason they decide not to go forward, but they can still come back for that up till 2020.
And to add to what the manager said, what's different between Union County Building Code Enforcement is, they function in unincorporated Union County alone. We cross all municipal boundaries in environmental health. Stallings, Gentrail, Fairview, Town of Waxaw, so we are throughout the county, not just unincorporated.
Well, our building inspections doesn't, because everyone but Waxaw and Mark and Magrove, they do their own, but we do cover all the municipalities as well.
So do you have a feel for the number of requests for permitting that are coming in from where it's, it's a rural area where we don't, they don't have access to water and sewer versus something where the developer's working with us? Is it a 70/30 split right now?
I don't have, I don't want to quote a number. We can get a number to you, but I would rather not quote a number to you because I don't have a good one in my head.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand what's driving this. It sounds like they're just going in some of the areas where we don't have existing water and sewer, where they can't connect longer-term.
The busy town, summer?
The warmer weather months.
That's when, that's when the workhorse picks up. Maybe ask, can you reach out to the school system, ask them if they've got any science teachers that want some summer training?
So, you know, we talked to, we talked to Brian about capturing municipal applications as well as the counties. Have we done that?
He was, he had a planning meeting, I want to say maybe three weeks ago, and he was going to talk to their planners about capturing that information. I have not had a report back as to whether or not the municipalities were receptive to gathering and submitting that information, but I can certainly check with him and let you know.
Because I spoke to several municipalities, and they have no problem. It's electronic, and Brian said it wasn't a big deal. But it sounds like it's something you really need, so you can do plans.
And you're talking about with respect to subdivision activity?
Yeah.
Yep. And old building permits that they're allowing, because Waxaw's got areas that don't have water and sewer too.
Waxaw does provide us on a monthly basis with number of building permits that have been issued, and I believe Magrove does as well. So we do capture in our numbers the building permits for those two municipalities that we don't inspect for. But as it relates to subdivisions, things that are kind of coming through the pipeline, yes, he was meeting with them to see if they would be willing to capture and forward that information to us.
And I'm involved in the review of all flats coming through, whether it's sewer, watered, or septic and well, or some combination of the two anyway, so that comes through environmental health now, and that's been fairly recent. So, yeah, we're aware of some of that.
So we have a laundry list of additional information you all would like to provide, and if you don't mind, I would just like to go through it and make sure-
Commissioner, I have some.
Oh, okay.
I have one more as well.
I just want to ask, and maybe it's inappropriate, is there one thing, if you walk out of this meeting tonight, would you say, well, if they would just do this, we could fix this problem?
If they would support environmental health.
Okay, and explain, elaborate. What does that mean?
If you would defer questions, as the manager and Michelle said, to them, and let us address specific concerns individually, because I found that, you know, sometimes I'm not in the office, I'm not getting the information they need, they're looking to get it immediately as a way to improve customer service. If you would allow us to do that, I greatly appreciate it. And if there's information that you're not sure of, so that we can make sure we get the most accurate information to the public, just let us know. We're here to help.
Okay. But to further expand on my question, it's not a funding issue, it's purely a staffing issue. Is that fair?
I think that's fair right now, yes. And it's just going to take some time, and we have a plan to move forward. Just need some time, but thankfully we have Michelle, we have Dennis, and we're moving forward.
So I'll add two other things. On your next presentation, if you would, similar to what Mr. Yates does on the demand for services, if you could kind of expand a little bit on, you know, how things are changing. You gave us a little bit of a snapshot in some of the areas in the presentation, and then what your goals are in each one of those areas. And we've talked a lot about environmental health. What's your other area of focus? I mean, is there something that you're, that you're working on that you, that I won't say keeps you up at night, but what's your concern right now? What are you, what are you driving other than to get into the building and get the parking taken care of?
And that doesn't keep me up at night, that'll happen. I'm calm. Child welfare is, I think if you're in this business, that's always something that you're concerned about and how you manage that, and I think in this community probably more than any, that that is something that is always at the forefront. But what I would say is with our staffing structure changes, I'm really confident that we're moving in the right direction. I think the priority that you're going to see from us over the next year is identifying our priorities, and so that we all know we're on the same page, and really working with business operations around compliance, our systems, our reporting, really getting really strong in that, ramping up what could be, I guess, seen as a negative term, but our level of sophistication as an organization, that when somebody calls and asks me for something, or if I call and ask for something, that I can get it. And I would say that's something, we've got some work to do, to be able to do that. We are a big, complex organization that has not ran like a big, complex organization. And I think that's what this community should expect, and it's what we should expect of ourselves.
Do you have a date in mind to achieve those goals?
No. We, one of the things, when we get a DSS director on board, and Dennis has just gotten here, we've made these changes, that starting in the new year, the leadership team's going to sit down and really start to work on those. So as we build the budget, we can bring those to you. I see it as we'll probably have some short-term, long-term ideas, what can, actually this group, as they, as they build this structure, put together their own short-term and long-term goals, so we'll start looking at those and prioritizing, and we'll be happy to share those with you.
Say it further.
Can I run through the list just to make sure we're all on the same page?
Okay.
We're going to bring back additional information to you on the parking, which you all will see anyway because of the fact that you all will have to approve the associated change order with that. On environmental health, you want us to double-check the numbers on environmental health. Look at opportunities that are available to us with respect to early college, et cetera, and trying to, how can we get authorized staff on board quicker than we presently do, and so, what, once we are fully staffed, what would be our turnaround time and provide that information to you? What is kind of driving the trend with respect to the number of septic tanks, which is where our, usually well in septic tanks, but normally what our biggest hurdle is right now is because of our soils, is the septic tanks. Demand for service, charges, and that's probably changes, changes in goals and then short and long-term objectives and priorities. Does that cover everyone's objective?
I think the only thing I would add is to Commissioner Simpson's point, is we do need to look at some sort of a policy that once this compa-class is completed, that we do create some sort of a contractual obligation with these employees to prevent them from moving on and using us as a training ground.
That's very common in corporate areas.
And we'll talk to our HR professionals about that.
And maybe one more thing, and just, is there a legislative solution to some of this? If we're having trouble, or other counties having trouble, do we need to ask that mandates be changed? Do we need to ask anything to be changed in the state law?
Well, and some of Tracy's comments is, this really is a public safety function, because what we are doing is ensuring that our public, when they buy a home, that the water is safe to drink, and that they can get rid of their waste appropriately without any contamination. And so when I look at environmental health, it really is public safety, and it's, it's difficult to say, okay, where do you take that, kind of that mandate, and what can you do to, without harming that objective? But we can certainly look at it.
Not an area to cut corners?
I don't think so. I think it's very important, and I think our residents expect, should expect nothing less of us.
I think maybe more, I was talking about the requirements on the, you know, is there a, is there an easier way, kind of like our fire-
About getting their authorization?
Yeah, our firefighters, you know, how we, it just seems every year it increases the requirements that they have to go through. Yes, it's important, but at the same time, if you're not able to get firefighters, that's important too. So is there something there that can, that they can do to help? So is there something there that they can do to help, so that get these people trained and get them in place?
So I have five nods in the head, that that is the information we were to bring back to you. Okay? Tried once, tried twice? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If nothing further, then I will move to recess this special meeting, reconvene at 6:20, is that okay, man? 6:20, first floor, conference room. All players say aye?
Aye.